All right, it is six o'clock. We'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. This is the last council meeting for this term. That's four years, just like that. So we do have kind of another last meeting on the second, which is the same as the swearing in of the new council. So I'll save my very long remarks for that one. But this is, yeah, this is the last full official council meeting of this term. Lots to be proud of around the table, including the gallery full of staff, lots to be proud of. We've accomplished an incredible amount in four years. We accomplished an incredible amount in the first year, then it was all about finding things to do for the other three years. So very proud of this council. Just a change to the agenda, we're going to move item 10.3 up. So after the minutes just before planning items, we're going to do item 10.3, which is the service lateral issue. So just your, just adjust your agendas. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda other than that change? Hearing none, we will deem the agenda as approved. And we'll go down to announcements. Just a couple of proclamations. So these proclamations are found on the town's website and Facebook page. So the proclamation of World Polio Day is October 24th, 2020. And also Waste Reduction Week is next week, October 19th to 25th, right after the municipal election. So I should probably make that announcement, that reminder that voting is underway now. It's all either online or by phone in the town of Bridgewater, and you can vote anytime up until seven o'clock on Saturday, the 17th. So I would implore everybody who has not voted to please vote. It is important. I would argue that the local level of government is the most important level of government because we provide all the services people use every day. So we want to have a good high voter turnout across Nova Scotia, so please vote. Which takes us to our next item, which is Volunteer Award, 2020 Volunteer Award. At the last meeting, we had our provincial. So John McDonald was our provincial volunteer, and now we have the corporate. And I'll ask Deputy Mayor Tanner to read that one.
Sounds good. So the 2020 Corporate Volunteer Award for the town of Bridgewater is going to CKBW, Country 100.7, Acadia Broadcasting Limited. CKBW, Country 100.7, Acadia Broadcasting Limited was nominated by the Health Services Foundation of the South Shore. Giving back to the community is a pillar of Acadia Broadcasting Limited, filtering from its owner to the on-air team and staff at CKBW and Country 100.7. The local radio stations welcome various community groups to connect with them in efforts to promote events, from including them on their community bulletin board, producing PSAs, to involving on-air talent and talking about opportunities for the public to be involved in these groups. Their staff feel very strongly about giving back to their listeners and their communities. There are very few events in the community CKBW and Country 100.7 are not involved with. They are forever grateful that staff said, excuse me, less, yes, let's do it, when the Health Services Foundation of the South Shore came to the stations 11 years ago about holding a Radio-Thon to raise funds for the South Shore Regional Hospital. Staff at the stations are involved in the planning process, starting in October, and are hands-on for 12 hours on Radio-Thon Day. 2020 is a special year for the Gift from the Heart Radio-Thon, as they celebrate 10 years and $1 million raised for local health care through this initiative. The Gift from the Heart Radio-Thon has made many new pieces of equipment possible at South Shore Regional Hospital, including an echocardiogram machine, a new ultrasound, ventilators, OR equipment, help to bring back urology services at the South Shore, and the beloved Journey Room for cancer patients and loved ones. So again, the 2020 Corporate Volunteer Award from the town of Bridgewater to CKBW, Country 100.7. Congratulations.
I just, I want to thank you for inviting me here this evening for this award. I wish it was one of these events that the whole staff could make it. It is a group adventure through and through. And the most impressive thing, and for those of you that don't know, I'm also the chair of the Health Services Foundation, so I get to see both sides of this. And to see my staff get energized for a 12-hour day, that's a hard day in radio. It's very hard. But to see the staff get energized and take ownership of this event is truly remarkable. We should almost have a little behind-the-scenes, I think, some camera work or something, because I don't know where they find the energy, but to give back to this town is certainly, is certainly something that we all look forward to. And that's a part of, you know, what CKBW, Country 100.7, and Acadia Broadcasting stands for, is giving back to the community. And we will be doing that for a very long time. So I do want to say thank you, and also want to say thank you to the current council, you know, and best of luck in the election for those that are re-offering. And thank you for all you've done for our town as well. We've seen some changes, and we're happy to be a good partner with the town and the surrounding areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item is the minutes from September 28th, regular council meeting. Are there any errors or omissions? Anything? Hearing none, we'll, the minutes is approved, and we will go down to the agenda item that we moved. And I see we have our engineering representative, planning representatives, flipping a coin over who's coming.
This is the service lateral?
Yes, it is.
We have agenda sorted with that.
That's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff requesting an unbudgeted $25,000 to correct the water and sanitary servicing issue on Wenzel Drive. Excuse me. In 2004, the Bridgewater Development Association sold a lot on Wenzel Drive to the Engine Center that wasn't serviced. There remains under the street, but this lot didn't have water and sanitary sewer lateral stubs at its property line. So the BDA gave permission to the Engine Center to cross the adjacent lot with their service laterals, a vacant lot also owned by the Bridgewater Development Association, to connect the stubs located there. At the time, it wasn't a standard of the town to require lateral connection to the trunk mains directly in front of the building, or at least between the two-side property boundaries. Subsequent correspondence with the BDA indicated their intention to fix that situation at the time when the vacant adjacent lot was sold, and that sale never did materialize. So the town inherited the issue. Now, L&amp;B Electric have purchased that vacant lot, however, its stubs are in use by the Engine Center. Staff believe we have an obligation to correct the situation so it adheres to our standards. That means work to install new services for the Engine Center to free up those in front of the L&amp;B property for an estimated cost of $25,000.
Questions from council? I don't see much choice in this. We have to correct a mistake that was made. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Put that on the floor?
I will, Your Worship.
Thank you.
The council for the town of Bridgewater approved non-budget expenditure in the amount of $25,000 from the operating budget to be funded from the operating reserve at year end if required in order to correct any existing situation and align the water and sanitary services for civic numbers 91 and 95 Wenzel Drive with our current standards.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any further discussion?
Are there any other properties that may be in the same position? Do we know?
That's a good question.
I'm not aware of any, but there may be, yes.
Okay, questions being called for, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. I forgot to mention, we're going to move 10.5 up as well, which is the Town Master Infrastructure Plan, Phase One and Two. Mr. Davidson is here to walk us through that one.
Thank you for rearranging the schedule for me and Nick. Today, I'm here to report on the Town Master Plan, which is part of the 2020-21 Operating Capital Budget. Operating Capital Budget. It is for two phases of the Master Plan, because we originally anticipated to do one phase in 2019-20, unfortunately, we didn't get to it. So we thought it best to do two phases this year. The areas of focus would be the undeveloped lands, both public and private, in the Gladden Alley area, as well as the, near the business park and the lands north of the 103. The plan will focus on key linear infrastructure, excuse me, components such as water, wastewater, storm sewer, transportation streets, as well as looking at land uses, zoning, open spaces, natural features, and active transportation. The desired outcome from the, both the phases of work would be a conceptual lot layout, both of undeveloped, private and public lands, to help guide development, ensure installation of proper services, provide connectivity of infrastructure neighborhoods, and reduce potential future conflicts in both areas. The RFP was issued in September, closing on September 25th. We received two submissions from Design Point Engineering and Surveying, as well as Ongle Corporation, both of whom we worked with recently. We reviewed it, both submissions, by committee of staff. The criteria can generally be described as quality proposal, qualifications, proposed methodology, and pricing. We employed a two-envelope system, which meant that we reviewed the proposals on a tactical basis first. If they received the minimum score of 56 points out of 70, then we would open the prices. Both received the minimum of 56 points, so we proceeded to prices and, to open prices, and then scored in relation to each other. The highest overall average score belongs to Design Point, very narrowly, Design Point Engineering and Surveying, limited. The operations budget for this year, as I said, includes two phases, had a value with a budget of $80,000 or $40,000 per, for two areas. If it is awarded, as staff recommend, we anticipate to be over budget by $27,720 net HST. It should be stated that staff will endeavor to balance this over expenditure with the approved overall capital budget without compromising strategic goals or other projects. At this time, staff are not recommending the award of any of the provisional items, i.e. the market analysis or the implementation plan, because we're currently over budget with the award itself of the base plans. As well as, if you look at the summary sheet, there is a large range in submitted prices. So in good conscience, we would like to work with the highest evaluated bidder and to further define the scope to make sure we're on the same page. And that the implementation plan will be done in the future, once we have a clearer vision of the potential development in each focus area. The strategic priorities that are linked to this are well-rooted in our endorsed plans with the two, last two operating capital budgets, the Economic Action Plan of 2018 and the 2014 Municipal Planning Strategy. The options presented to council would be to award both phases of the master infrastructure plan or study to the proponent with the highest overall score exceeding product budget, not award the work due to the being over budget, re-scope and reissue, to not award the work due to being over budget, re-scope, award, and complete next year. With respect to the provisional items, the options would be to select and award both, any or both provisional items exceeding the budget, to select any and award, to select and award any of the provisional items subject to staff investigation, negotiation, and report back to council or to not award. Staff are recommended to award the engineering services for the development of a Town Master Infrastructure Plan, Phase One and Two, RFP 2020-10, to Design Point Engineering and Surveying Limited, for a total of $98,500 plus HST, or $102,271 with 90 cents net HST, and defer to any decision on the provisional items, directing staff to confirm the scope and associated costs with the successful proponent and reporting back to council. Thank you.
I feel like you jammed a lot in there.
Talk fast, too.
That's all right. Questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor?
So Matt, what's the timeline for completing one and two?
The timeline? I wrote that at the top of my page, because I thought that would be, so the anticipated timeline is January 2021. So this is?
Be delivered to us?
Yeah.
Okay. And so if we're going to go back to them and negotiate three and four, or at least talk about three and four, will those be locked-in values? Like, so you'll come back to council in the, whatever the council is, a month or two, I assume?
I will. Given the staff discussion prior to, well, during the writing of the memo, we would get on top of the market analysis right away.
Okay.
Because we do think it's important, but like I said, I'm a little hesitant, given the range of values, we're somewhere around $4,000 to?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four thousand. So we want to come back right away with that.
Okay. Other questions? Counsel Graves?
So because the provisional items are taken out, because they could be re-costed, there could be new pricing, Eniglo is a $15,000 cheaper, if you're only doing ones and twos?
They are $15,000, I might have to look at, but yes, I would say they are cheaper.
And the provisional items, they're going to be re, they're going to be looked at again. The prices could be completely different.
Could be, yeah.
So I'm just saying, I'm just wondering why we're going to the higher price.
Because the overall score itself, in terms of the score for the price?
I see that.
Thirty points to Ongle and 26 to Design Point, and there's only a half point difference. And normally provisional items are part of the evaluation criteria.
Counsel? Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor, please.
I move the council of the town of Bridgewater award RFP 2020-10, Engineering Services for the Development of a Town Master Infrastructure Plan, Phase One and Two, to Design Point Engineering and Surveying Limited, for a total price of $98,500 plus HST, $102,271 and 90 cents net HST, and defer to any decision on the provisional items, directing staff to confirm the scope of work and associated costs with the successful proponent and report back to council.
A second, please, Counsel McDonald. This will be a very exciting document for us when this comes back. This, for the public, kind of maps out as we grow, continue to grow, especially now incorporating those lands north of the 103. This will be the map that helps us do that in a very deliberate way that maximizes our use and, yes, I'm super excited for when this comes back. Are there any other questions? Counsel McDonald?
I just wanted to say, very close with the turnaround time, this information is information that we need fairly quickly to start making some strategic decisions that we need to make. Thank you.
Yeah, getting this in January.
It will be included in the scope as well as a presentation to council specifically, so that you will get a read from the council.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we have a mover and a secondere. Any further discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you, and good luck in the auctions.
Okay, we're going down or back up to planning items. Application for Development Agreement for 54 Pearl. Let's see, we have Ms. Childs from Community Development is going to walk us through that one.
Yeah, so staff received an application for a development agreement for a collective residential development at 54 Pearl Street. This first came to council in the fall of 2019, and the public participation meeting was held in January. Batteries, thanks. I will. So the application is for sustainable collective residential cohousing development. So a collective residential development is one that consists of more than one dwelling on one or more lots. And the development would be 30 units, made up of two-story townhouses and a common house. And there would be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The property is currently a vacant forested piece of land that's about 15 acres. It's located off of Pearl Street, near St. Philip Street, and the Centennial Trail runs alongside the property line. The property is owned comprehensive residential on the zoning map of the land use bylaw, and is designated as comprehensive residential on the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. And the surrounding zoning is a big mix of single-unit residential, two-unit residential, comprehensive residential, medium-density residential, residential manufactured home, and institutional. And there's also some industrial, special, commercial, and park nearby, so there's a variety going on there. And there's a mix of low, medium, and high-density residential in the surrounding area that contains single-units, two-unit buildings, and multi-unit developments, as well as a land lease community. And so this site plan, you don't need to look at any of the details, it's just to give you a context of where the buildings would be built on the property. So they develop near the east side of the property, off of Pearl Street, near the Centennial Trail, and they would maintain a lot of the forested area that's along the back. So this is a zoomed-in section of the development. And just for context, the light orange is the location of the four buildings that are being proposed. The yellow shows where outdoor parking would be. Blue is the common house, and green is a workshop. There'd be a driveway from Pearl Street that leads behind the buildings where the parking would be located, as well as a drivable courtyard from Pearl Street in between the four buildings, and that would have an emergency vehicle turnaround at the end. The courtyard would be kind of a shared space for vehicles and pedestrians, but the design would prioritize now on vehicular movement. There would be entrances to the units going to the courtyard, walkways from the buildings, rain gardens in front as part of their stormwater management plan, and a ramp and stairs kind of going down to the parking section in the back. And you can see that there is some proposed landscaping closer to Pearl Street and the Centennial Trail to provide a little bit of a buffer. And this is an example of one of the two building styles. This isn't being held to in the DA though, the exact design. So there would be units on the ground floor and units on the top floor, and there would be a walkway on the front upper level connecting those units on the top, and the building would face onto the draggable courtyard in the middle. And this is an image of the proposed common house. It would be the main indoor shared space, separate from the individual units, and it would be located at the end of the drivable courtyard, and there would be some bicycle parking, accessible parking nearby, and there's a proposal to have solar panels on the building as well. So a public participation meeting was held on January 15th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. here in council chambers. Twenty members of the public attended, and the main concerns were about traffic volume and existing vehicle speeds on Pearl Street, emergency vehicle access and how that would be accommodated, any site contamination from previous uses, as well as just concern about blasting and the shale that exists there, and as well as access from St. Philip Street instead of Pearl Street. There were some questions about that, and also the location of the internal trails to make sure that they weren't going onto other properties. So staff conducted a policy analysis to make sure the development is supported, and there are seven of the 15 overarching MPS policies which were relevant, as well as policies in other parts of the municipal planning strategy. So overall, the policy aims to minimize conflict between land uses. It looks at general compatibility in terms of height of the building, the scale, the density, the style of the building, as well as things like lighting, noise, and signage. So the property is adjacent to residential zones and uses, so it's keeping in line with the surrounding area. The two-story design would be compatible with surrounding buildings, and there would be some landscaping to enhance buffering between properties. And although based on the size of the property, the density and lot coverage are actually low, because the property is quite big, the development would be compatible with the surrounding residential uses. And the land use bylaw would end up capturing details for things that the development agreement doesn't specify. So the policy also looks at compatibility with existing infrastructure. The street infrastructure was analyzed, and although there were initial concerns about Pearl Street versus St. Philip Street, it has been determined that Pearl Street can accommodate the development. There is information supported, provided to support that. A wastewater study was not required, because the potential hazard rate density on this lot could be much more than is going to happen based, if the, if the land was to be subdivided. And any water servicing details will be finalized upon permitting rather than at the development. And, um, any water servicing details will be finalized upon permitting, rather than, than at the development agreement stage. Um, the town's policy also aims to promote diverse and convenient neighborhoods, and, uh, this development would provide residential densification within this area of town, um, since it is adding, or it would add thirty units to an existing neighborhood and an existing street network. The policy also intends to support a rate, a range of transportation options. So, uh, the amount and design of bicycle and vehicular parking would be in line, uh, with what is required in the land use bylaw. Uh, there's no sidewalks on Pearl Street, however, um, adding any would be out of the scope of this development, and uh, the consultant, uh, sees walking on this short amount of street towards Victoria Road as reasonable, and similar to other low, local low-volume roads, and there is access to the Centennial Trail. Policy also aims to enable a full range of housing options. Um, so this development would offer a different type of housing, um, since it's cohousing as well as collective residential. And there would also be a mix of one, two, and three unit, uh, three-bedroom units. Um, and there would also be ample, um, indoor and outdoor amenity space. The policy also intends to preserve, enhance, and protect the natural environment. So the development agreement specifies, um, retention of trees and vegetation on much of the property, um, in this undisturbed area, um, except for some thinning that would be permitted. And there's also some, um, slopes in the area that would require stabilization. And finally, the, um, policy is also aimed to promote sustainable infrastructure. So a stormwater management plan has been submitted and will be fully reviewed upon permitting. Uh, the developer must ensure post-development peak stormwater flows are equal to or less than pre-development flows. Um, and, uh, the property shall also include at least one renewable energy system, so as I mentioned, solar has been proposed, but, um, that specific kind is not held, um, in the DA. So the development agreement, um, holds the property owners two specific things while leaving, um, the rest to the land use bylaw. And so the permitted use, um, is a collective residential development of thirty units in four buildings, as well as a common house and workshop as main buildings. The massing and location of the buildings must be in substantive accordance with the site plan. And there must be at least one energy system, and that would be completed within twenty-four months of the issuance of any occupancy permit. Uh, landscaping shall be in reasonable, reasonable accordance with the planting plan, which shows the location and types of vegetation, and focuses on stormwater management landscaping and, um, landscaping that will act as buffering. And most of the landscaping shall be completed within twenty-four months of any occupancy permit, except any labeled future, and that would be completed within five years. And, um, as I've mentioned, there would be a large undisturbed wooded area where only selective thinning is permitted, and that would be with permission from the development officer. And slopes of a certain grade must be stabilized, and permission, um, to remove any trees, uh, when going to actually construct and, as well as after, um, there would be permission from the development officer for that as well. Vehicular parking, um, would be slightly more than required by the land use bylaw, and bicycle parking would be, uh, the same amount as required. Uh, so the development agreement is stipulating forty-five, uh, vehicular parking spaces and fifteen bicycle spots. And, um, bike parking shall be designed and located in accordance with the land use bylaw, and vehicular parking shall be located in reasonable accordance with, uh, what's shown on the site plan. Um, the development agreement requires a private driveway and walkway, uh, from Pearl Street to the development, and a drivable courtyard that must have an, uh, emergency vehicle turnaround, and they should have a stable surface maintained in all seasons. Um, as I mentioned, a wastewater study was not required. Um, and the development agreement states that services and, uh, the stormwater management plan have to be approved by the town engineer. And a development agreement includes sections that are substantive, and, um, for this development agreement, um, those are the permitted use and the addition or deletion of land from the property. And, um, normally the town can just discharge a development agreement if the use hasn't begun within twenty, or, sorry, twelve months of the agreement. Uh, but because of COVID, that, um, for this one has been extended to twenty-four months to provide a little bit of leeway. Um, so we are at the planning analysis report and first consideration of the proposed development agreement. And the next step is the public hearing and council's decision on the development agreement. So it's recommended that, uh, town council get first consideration to the draft development agreement for a collective residential development at fifty-four Pearl Street, and that count, town council schedule a public hearing for November ninth, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Questions from council? Council Thorburn?
Just one, it seems like we're putting another number of units into a situation where we don't have one access in and one access out. There's only one driveway coming off of Pearl Street. Now, I believe I was talking to Leon about this issue a while ago, and I think they do own land that butts up on Saint Philip Street. But this request is only showing it coming off of Pearl.
Yeah, so there was original, um, they do, you're right, they own a, kind of a, a right-of-way onto, um, Saint Philip Street. So, um, originally, um, staff had concerns about that as well, accessing it only from Pearl Street. Um, but for, uh, various reasons, um, it, they, they really wanted it only off of Pearl Street. And, um, with the emergency vehicle turnaround at the back, um, and the analysis that was done, there was a traffic study done, and some additional information that engineer, uh, engineering required. Um, they determined that having the one access point was sufficient for the development.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
So just out of curiosity, with a collective development like this, how is it assessed? Is it assessed as a whole, and the community pays into a, a tax assessment, or is it individual units?
That I don't know, I don't know.
Out of curiosity?
Yeah.
The, uh, the lot would have one assess value.
Okay.
It's, it's condominium, right?
Okay, okay, that's how it's structured, okay.
Other questions? Council Graves?
For the parking spaces, does that, the forty-five parking spaces for thirty units, does that include visitor parking as well?
They're, they don't specify really. Um, I also forgot to mention, um, most of the parking is outside, but there, um, are a few, um, indoor ones, kind of under the back of, uh, two of the buildings. Um, so, um, I believe those would be for the, um, residents, but, um, the land use bylaw requires, I think it's thirty-eight, um, and we've given them forty-five, because they wanted a few more, and we gave them a little bit of leeway as well. Um, so they're not specifying that it's for, um, anyone per se, or that we know of, at least right now.
Just seems a little bit. So, just one other. In regards to landscaping, somewhat my mind seemed long, twenty-four months and five years, would that be typical of a, of a development?
Um, so, uh, normally, uh, similar to like the termination, we had originally talked about twelve months, um, but they just weren't really sure. I feel like everything's a little bit up in the air because of COVID, so, um, they wanted a little bit longer. Um, and they have a lot of specific landscaping, um, that is required, so things that have to, um, be in there for stormwater management, as well as buffering. Um, so I didn't show like the full landscaping plan, there was just the one-site plan, uh, but they just wanted enough time to permit it, and, yeah. And it's still going to be like buffered from the road and other properties based on what's already there, um, but yeah.
Other questions? Council Prejean?
So do we know if all thirty units have been spoken for, as far as, I'm just curious, as, like, there's no phase A and phase B?
Right. Yeah, so we talked about phasing with them, um, and we have specified in the development agreement that it is thirty units, not up to or anything like that, that it is specifically thirty units, and they wanted that, they were comfortable with that, and we talked about phasing, but, um, they're very confident that they are going to just be able to, to do it.
Okay.
Um, so they didn't, they don't want any.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? I find this, this project is very fascinating. Um, I've spoken to one person who reached out from the U K. They're hoping to move to Bridgewater from Bristol in the U K, specifically because of this project, which then led to a conversation I had with the mayor of Bristol, who is himself now fascinated about cohousing and how they can do it in Bristol, because they're, they have a Brexit issue. So they're, they're losing residents of their city to, especially to Canada, as, as what they're calling Brexit refugees. Um, so he was trying to woo them back with trying to find out about the cohousing project here, specifically for, uh, for this individual, because they didn't want them to leave. So I just found it very fascinating, as we talk about housing needs around the country, and needing, um, not just affordable housing, but a diversity, uh, a more diverse offering of housing, that this is something that I see some potential in, in meeting some of that need, so. It'd be interesting to follow this along. Council McDonald?
Um, in, in doing some research to try to understand the, the nature of, of this type of development, I was looking for other developments, and at least on the east coast, I don't find many. Have you been able to find examples of some on the east coast? I see some on the west coast.
Yeah.
Slightly different, structured a little bit differently.
Yeah, I don't know the stats, but I think they're going to be the first ones in Atlantic Canada, or one of the first ones. I don't really know, it wasn't part of our work, but that's just what I've heard them say. Don't quote me on that, but it's definitely anywhere concept that they're bringing.
I'm still searching now.
Is someone prepared to make a motion? Council Thorburn?
I would move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater give first consideration to the development agreement that's contained in Appendix A of Document nineteen dash one five six eight for fifty-four Pearl Street, and schedule a public hearing during the regular scheduled council meeting on November the ninth, twenty twenty at six P M in the council chambers at Town Hall.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Prejean, whether new council's going to be hit the ground running with a public hearing. Fantastic. My. Uh, any further discussion?
Question?
Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Um, down to reports and recommendations, we have the Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program, uh, September report, and as always, just, um, I don't know what we would do without this program. It is unbelievable. Um, and, uh, I would encourage people to just read the stats of how many people, um, this program serves. So I'm very grateful to, to have that in our community. Our next is, uh, RFP twenty twenty dash eleven, Design and Implementation of Coordinated Access System for Bridgewater, which sounds super cool when you say it like that. So I, I see our Director of Community Development coming down to the podium to walk us through this one.
Thanks, I have new glasses, so bear with me as I go like this.
Sorry, the glove.
So a, a core component of Energize Bridgewater's Smart City Challenge Project is the development of a coordinated access system. So this will act as, basically as the door for residents to access, uh, other services of the program, including home energy upgrades. So in September, staff issued a request for proposals for the design and implementation of this coordinated access system for Bridgewater. The town sought a consultant with experience setting up such a system in Atlantic Canada that met requirements laid out by the federal government's homelessness reduction strategy. Staff recommend that town council approve the award of the RFP Design and Implementation of a Coordinated Access System for Bridgewater to Lisa Ryan. Lisa submitted, uh, the sole proposal for the RFP, but strongly met the requirements for leading the work. Um, and she actually relocated to Bridgewater earlier this year from Moncton, where she established a coordinated access system for, uh, the city of Moncton that targeted homelessness reduction. And, uh, she's currently working here in Bridgewater, so that was great. Um, just a little bit about what is a coordinated access system, because you might be asking that a little bit. Um, and so really, an important outcome of our Smart Cities Challenge Program are to reduce energy poverty and increase access for residents in our community that are most in need, and it's access to the various community services, um, that, that are linked to some of the issues they might be facing, uh, if they're in energy poverty. So coordinated access system is an important part of achieving those outcomes and connecting residents to our program. Um, once set up, the coordinated access system will function to support the community organizations, uh, to collaborate, assess, and refer, and sort of triage, uh, at-risk clients in the community to the right, uh, services, including the Energize Bridgewater program.
Questions from council? Council Graves?
So this is strictly for the Town of Bridgewater, the coordinated access? But will it have the ability to, uh, engage with people outside the town at some point, do you think?
Uh, that would be, I think, a future iteration, that's a good question, and I'd refer that back, I'll go back to the Energize team for that clarity, but, um, for us, it is strictly for the Town of Bridgewater and the Town of Bridgewater, uh, residents and, and people, um, you know, properties in the Town of Bridgewater. So, but as part of Smart Cities Challenge Program, all of our, our work needs to be replicable and scalable. So the, the details, the nuts and bolts of the system for here, I think it will be, um, it will have spillover into like any of the other services outside of the Energize program, that may be a component of that, that are offered outside of, of the town, would be, if that makes sense. I think it would still be accessed, um, you know, but the initial and the, the core setting it up is focused here with the town.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's a good question. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Jessica, what's, what's the timeline on getting the deliverable on this?
That is a good question, uh, soon.
Sorry.
Uh, I left, it's on, it's, uh, on, on my computer, I don't have it right on my, uh, at the tip of my fingers. Um, but I believe it's over the next six to eight months.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not like in the next month or two.
Yeah, no, okay.
Yeah.
That's actually a good question, just if you can just let us know when you
Yeah, it's back, it's over there.
Okay. So we'll know soon?
Yes, yes. I'll confirm that.
Any other questions from council? Someone prepared to make a motion?
Make a motion?
Council Prejean has.
Yes, your worship. That town, that Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of staff and award RFP twenty twenty dash eleven, Design Implementation of a Coordinated Access System for Bridgewater to Lisa Ryan for the proposal price of eighty-six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars plus HST, or ninety thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-five cents net HST.
Thank you. Seconded by, Deputy Mayor Tanner, further discussion? Or none? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Uh, we did ten point three, we're going to ten point four, which is first quarter twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, so many twenties, financial report. We'll welcome our Director of Finance. I can't say new Director Finance anymore.
Well.
It's like, well, newish?
Newish, yes. It's been less than six months.
Okay, we'll, we'll go with that. Let me know when we're after six months.
Um, so I've given you a first quarter report, and so that takes us, um, up to the end of June. Um, and so what you're going to hear me say a lot is COVID. So, um, and, and, you know, that's just the reality, we've had some, some impacts in all the various areas. And so if we kind of start at the top with revenue, on the tax revenue side, it's been relatively consistent, because it's based on an assessed value. However, we also have de-transfer tax, which, um, we had kind of anticipated, um, in some earlier discussions, I think it was May with council, that we were severely impacted, and we're expecting day transfer tax to be down. Um, it's actually trending that we should actually meet our original budget that was approved in April. And so, you know, so that has us in, in pretty good shape as far as that goes, as long as the market continues to stay as it has. Because revenue was, you know, in April, half of what it was last month, for example. Um, May got a little better, and then June and so on have been good. If we have another wave, um, or the housing market doesn't have enough housing on the market, we're going to see less transactions, and that could go down. So while we're optimistic that it, you know, based on the current trend, we can meet the original budget, it, you know, the reality is of the next few months, um, that could change again. So, you know, so it has us kind of on track, but, um, it's really, that de-transfer tax is such a significant number, the budget for the year is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, a, a hit to de-transfer tax or a positive trend in it really makes a significant difference as far as revenue goes for the town. In, under sales of service, we have a few things that have been impacted, so for the most part, that revenue item is under budget, and we're forecasting that to be consistent right to the end of the year. Um, and a lot of it was impacted by things that were happening in April and May, such as transit fees, because we had, um, either no transit or we weren't charging for it until things got, um, back to normal in July. Recreation programming, obviously what we've been able to provide for a recreation program is significantly, um, decreased, so we're expecting, um, that to be under budget by sixty-seven thousand dollars by the end of the March, by the end of March. We also had the pool not open, as well as some modifications to the Canada Day events and so on. So we're under the sales of service, that's a lot of those things that, um, were brought to you in budget adjustments in May are really the things that are impacting that line item. For other revenue from owned sources, we're actually expecting a positive variance. Um, the unfortunate reason for that is because taxes receivable are a little higher, our interest that we're earning, um, on those receivable balances is higher. So while that's a positive variance, it's not a, a positive reason. Um, there were a few negatives there as well, um, parking meter and parking ticket revenue, obviously we weren't ticketing during, um, the, um, I guess, the worst of the COVID times, so, and that didn't start happening until July and August, so again, the revenue for those items is quite under budget. And conditional transfers from, from other government, um, just vacant positions and some change in some funding, such as recreation grants, um, have reduced our revenue on that end, um, but we also have reduced expenditures as well. So that's where we are as far as, um, the, the revenue goes. as well. So that's where we are as far as the revenue goes compared to budget to date and what we're forecasting. On the expenditure side, there's a few things going on. You know, some things that were budgeted for a, were cut in the budget adjustments in May, or they're just things that haven't been priority to spend on. So for the most part, under most of the categories under expenditures, that's what we'll see. So under financial management and general government services, we've really, you know, whether it was limiting the number of conferences and training and all those things, we've really, while we have a positive variance, it's really because there's things we haven't been doing. Under protective services, a few things there. When I say negative variance due to vacation, I know that's very accounting-y sounding. But when we might have actually had staff taking vacation and using up those vacation balances, instead, they're accruing it. So we keep adding to our costs as they're building up their vacation time and not taking it. So it's just the month, because we budget salaries by month, and we kind of anticipate vacations and things in that. Obviously, people weren't taking a lot of their vacation during COVID because there was nowhere to go. Some of those balances were higher. So, you know, we're working with staff to make sure they're taking their vacations. But, you know, so some of that's kind of accounting terms. So I thought I might give you a little bit of extra information on that one. And fire protection, we had some savings mostly due to a position vacancy. Under transportation services, obviously, we had some things going on with transit as well as parking. So we've got some variances there. But we did save by not going ahead with the parking study. And so that's created a positive variance just because of the savings there. Under environmental health, some positive variances there. But again, we're just really talking about, you know, what people were working on. And a lot of our cases, staff wages are allocated to different areas depending on what they're doing at the time. So while we might have, you know, redeployed some public work staff and so on, it just didn't match up where we had budgeted for them to work during that timeframe. And under recreation, obviously, the pool didn't open, the recreation program were down. So there were a lot of cost savings in that area. But we also had offsetting decreases in revenue. And so that affected parks and playgrounds, festivals, all those, all those various expenditures under recreation. Fiscal services, oh, and LCLC looks a little bit off. But we had accrued in last year and LCLC's deficit, which we were funding in this fiscal year. So that's a little bit under because they actually hadn't given us their invoice yet. So it's looking like it's a little bit different than we have budgeted. And under fiscal services, our debt charges are under budget. But it's because municipal finance corporation didn't take out of our bank account the interest when they should have. They actually delayed when they did that. When they would have done it in the spring, they waited until the summer to do that, to give relief for the municipal units. So, but we budget by month. So it just had thrown that off a bit. So that basically leaves us overall with an anticipated budget surplus. That's what we're anticipating by March thirty-first of two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Again, you know, another wave of COVID, and we're not sure the impacts that will have on our revenue sources as well as our expenditures. So that's at this point in time what we're forecasting if everything stays the same.
That could have been much worse.
Yeah.
Like I just, I read that when all the documents were uploaded, I'm like, okay, this is, this is going to be an interesting read. And I think it speaks to how well the province has done. The Atlantic Bubble, Lunenburg County, Bridgewater, staff made adjustments, quickly pivoted. Yeah, that could have, that could have been a very, very ugly report. And I know in some municipalities, reading some of the candidate bios in some of the other areas of the province, they're all talking about, we're not going to meet our targets here. We're not going to meet our revenue here because they're struggling. So like I said, this could have been a very difficult read. So that's hats off to staff for making adjustments quickly where they could. Questions? Comments? Councilor Thorburn?
Just one, Kim. Detransfer tax under revenues, where do you have that shelved?
It just is in tax revenue. So it's not its own separate line item, but it is in tax revenue in the total.
Is it possible to have its own line item so we can see and compare it?
Yes, I just maintain the same reporting format that you had been used to seeing. So over time, you may see this report transition, but we can add that for next time. It's a very manual document. Staff are working on automating it right now. But we can add that suggestion. Because especially for this year, I mean, I know last year there was a large surplus in detransfer tax was over budget last year. So it is one that can really be impactful. So I certainly see why that might be good to separate out.
Yeah, when you're dealing with that larger amount of money, it would be nice to have its own line item, and then we can compare it from quarter to quarter, to year to year. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any questions? Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Kim, how, or could you explain, I guess, how wages are over budget by eighty thousand under transportation services? How does that happen?
So essentially, what happened was, like, if you take an employee who might work in four different parks in a day. And so we budget for how those wages might be allocated. Staff were rotating actually during the COVID, and parks might have been a bad example because we called them back a little bit late. But staff might work on various different things. So they were rotating staff. Some staff were at home, some staff were here. So anybody that wasn't physically on town property being charged to an account, you know, charged to an account, because there are, you know, literally hundreds of town accounts. And so wages would be spread out whether they were, depending on what they were working on, what capital project, and so on. So it's not additional wages, per se. It's just they weren't allocated anywhere else because they weren't specifically working there. Their time cards are very detailed. That would allocate it to where they were working.
Okay.
So that's a little bit more complicated. But it was mostly used by engineering to allocate their folks that were not.
So is that why you comment offset by savings in other areas?
Yeah. So there would be other areas throughout that had some savings on wages. But it's not really, it's just a reallocation between different departments.
Got it, got it.
There were, we're probably about thirty thousand over because we had to add additional cleaning to various properties of the town, whether it was Town Hall, et cetera. So there was twice a day cleaning in a lot of places.
Okay. Makes sense. Other questions? All right. Thank you. Our next item is ten point six, Energy Management Program and Efficiency One Contract Renewal. I feel like Kim is going to sit down, then she's going to come back up, and then she's going to sit down, and then come back up. I like how we space that. Everyone's getting their steps in.
Need a little break.
Yep. Sorry, Energy Management Program.
Okay. So this is to do with the, I guess, two issues. One is our energy management plan until twenty nineteen. So its term has expired. And along with that, our contract with Efficiency One for an onsite energy manager expires this week, on the eighteenth, I believe it is. So council adopted a energy management program, and that was done in twenty fifteen for your, for your timeframe. You had some targets within that program. Twenty-five percent consumption reduction at non-processed facilities, and a five percent consumption reduction at process facilities. Remembering that that started in twenty fifteen. We, the town partially achieved some of those targets. There were some issues that were identified later on during the term, specifically related to capacity and expertise within the organization to, to assess proposals with respect to energy management and to implement them. So in twenty eighteen, the town entered into a contract with Efficiency One for a full-time onsite energy manager. And that position was specifically brought onboard to look at the development or identifying, coordinating, and implementing energy efficiency projects for the town. And the time was split between two programs. So one was your energy management program, which would be looking at your facilities and how to reduce consumption there, and as well as supporting Energize Bridgewater. So looking at and scoping feasibility studies, program design, related to the housing energy management system and community energy systems. So there's about a sixty forty, split between the two. And that was a contract that expired August twenty twenty, and we pushed it out a few months, and it expires at the end of the week. They are offering to renew that contract with the town for another twenty-four months. And staff is recommending that council give that consideration. Partly to continue to look at energy management planning and reduce our consumption, also to recognize that you've set some other targets. So you adopted the community energy investment plan. And this plan committed you to full, a full-scale greenhouse gas emissions reduction of eighty-one percent. So you set some other targets that energy management can help you realize as well. And we do have some concerns with the resources and expertise on staff, that we will not be in a position to achieve those targets. So we're looking for some direction. And I guess you probably say, so how have we done in terms of, in terms of our greenhouse gas reduction? Have we seen some gains there? Is it worth continuing with? Page, the third page of the report, you can see that we do have two graphs that show you kind of how we've done. The left-hand side is for facilities that are non-processed facilities. So our treatment plants wouldn't be included in that. But we look at, say, this building or other facilities similar to that. And you can see that we have made some gains, actually exceeding our targets in that area. And you see the green dashed line is the emissions, and our target is the brown dashed. And on the right-hand side, you can see our process facilities. So we've come down a bit. But what is evident by looking at these is that, you know, we really got the low-hanging fruit. So you can see the drop, and then it kind of levels out. And so what that implies is that there's some deeper dives that are required to, it's where we really need to drill down and do some assessments to determine what the opportunities are. And I would use the LCLC as a perfect example of that, where we had to assess, and that involved spending some money upfront, doing that assessment to determine what the possibilities were. And the savings we're going to realize will well exceed any investment that we made in looking at that. So that's where we are. We're into those deeper dives. We've done the lights, we've done the switches and HVAC systems and all of that. So it's to look at those other pieces. So attached to the report, you will have a draft of an energy management plan that Efficiency One through Miles and staff have looked at. And you'll see that in here, a lot of the actions, because we did ask them for an action, like, we need some concrete items to understand what it is that we're going to be doing. And a lot of them are in the discovery phase, meaning that they need to be assessed, they need to be studied. You can't just say replacing this is going to save you money. You really need to analyze it. And that's what they're telling us. And what we're suggesting is that council give direction to have this, this plan finalized with an implementation plan that has some concrete actions for next year. So that you can see, instead of just putting a hundred and fifty dollars in the budget with nothing attached to it, because that's what's been happening, is that we have some concrete, concrete projects that you'll see savings from. So that would be, the direction given is to finalize the plan, develop an implementation plan, and bring that back. And to enter into that contract for twenty-four months, it's fifty percent funding. So the town would have to fund fifty percent of that. The two-year cost is ninety-eight thousand, and that is split between Energize Bridgewater and the town. That's your operating. Your capital, what they're suggesting to meet some targets in terms of emissions reductions of fifty percent from your baseline, you'd have to commit around nine hundred and thirty thousand. Now, that's just putting a value in the budget every year. So that's why we're suggesting we need that implementation plan, so that we would see what those projects were, that there was something attached to that hundred and fifty. We're suggesting that there be a six-month opt-out period for this contract. So if we renew the contract with Efficiency One for the position, they fund fifty percent, we fund fifty percent, that it'd be for twenty-four months with a six-month out. Meaning if we see that implementation plan in the final draft of this, and we just don't feel it's where we should be going, it doesn't give us the value that we were hoping for, then we can opt out and not continue. So that is the recommendation of staff. In terms of implications for the budget this year, part of that was already maintained in the budget with Energize Bridgewater. And the other fifty percent, I think, is around eight thousand we had identified. We feel that we'll be able to cover that off within the operating budget, so that it wouldn't negatively impact your operating budget to do this.
Questions from council? Deputy Mayor Tanner.
So it certainly seems like we've got a very, very good return on investment based on the initial investment and what we've seen. But you mentioned, you know, doing a deep dive and going deeper. So I assume the individual that's going to be continuing on or potentially continuing on for six months or twenty-four months, we're going to need consultants to come in, I assume, to do that deeper dive piece?
Yeah, I would say that there may be some things that we have to do, whether it's at our process facilities that may involve, just like with LCLC, we did have that resource, but we needed to bring in other resources to, to do that assessment as well.
So with that, is a six-month opt-out enough? Could we, could we have a six and then maybe a one year? Or just, I guess I'm worried we wouldn't get in deep enough to, I don't know, maybe not.
I don't know, Jessica, if you, if they agreed to anything beyond six months? The hundred and fifties say that you see in the budget, that would be bringing in consultants. But what we're, we're suggesting is that rather than just say a hundred and fifty, that it be that we assess, say, the, some type of process at our wastewater treatment plant, or whatever it is that we have. We have something identified that we want to drill down into.
Okay.
So there was, I think, the draft contract that I think was attached to the report as well. It has, so their standard contract has an evaluation and the ability to leave the contract after three months. They've agreed to having that at six months. But they also have a standard, we have to give three months notice, ninety, ninety days, and they can also give us thirty days notice to sort of opt out of the contract at any point. So we can, so further to, you know, at any three-month increment, we can also give notice if we feel that it's not working for us anymore.
Okay.
Other questions?
It's the, it's the concrete actions that I'm looking for. We, we're great at getting our plans starting to go. And seeing that chart go in the right direction is awesome. But everything else around us is happening at such a faster rate. The tipping point for climate change is a date that is coming closer to us. So we need to do more in a quicker amount of time. And so looking at these actionable steps and hoping that they're very aggressive while balancing affordability is, is key for me. And we're going to have a discussion with, with the next council about doing things the way some other places do. I know we talked about someone, with someone from Oslo, for example, greenhouse gas emissions are in their budget, and it's controlled by finance. So if your engineering department has a project, they only get a budget for their carbon footprint for the year.
Oh, really?
And so, and finance is the best department to manage any kind of budget, including the greenhouse gas budget. And so they have to be able to work within that. So it might be, using the example of Oslo, their construction sites have to use electric construction vehicles because otherwise they can't meet their targets. So they've learned how to adapt. And I'm not saying they all have to go out and buy electric construction vehicles. But my point, rather, is we have to be thinking in terms of not just what we can do to lower the carbon footprint of our buildings and our processes, but also the other work we do outside, whether it's cutting the grass in a park or laying concrete, hoping that this new concrete that's being invented in Nova Scotia that sucks the carbon out of the air is something that's really going to be used around the community. So I'm glad there's some clauses in here to give us the out if they're not what we want, but.
Yeah. And just, just to add to that, part of the challenge of getting to, say, like a ten-year specific, all these projects, and part of the challenge that we had with the previous energy management plan that had all the projects laid out in it, is that things started to shift. And so we might get the first few years, and then need to sort of assess and shift and sort of that adaptive management approach is part of what, why the draft energy management plan is how it is right now. But we want, we want to try to find a hybrid where it's this, this is the continuous improvement cycle with specific key, you know, items that we want to see addressed at the same time. So that's where we see it going.
Any other questions? Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, Tammy.
Yeah, Tammy, we're co-funding that with Department of Energy and Mines 50%. So for this budget year, to March 31st, we would have had money in the budget.
It's in the budget, yeah.
Yeah. So what we're really talking about is having money in the budget for next year.
That's right. So it'd be a 24-year, oh, 24-year, 24-month contract.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, we would be committing for a couple of years, understanding that by the end of this fiscal year, we would see some type of a plan that would give us an idea, but whether or not we wanted to continue.
So we'd be on, in line for around $75,000 next year if it's co-funded 50/50?
The two years is $98,000.
Okay.
So I think it's 46 a year.
No, that's fine. No, okay.
And it's co, at this point, it's co-shared 50/50 between Energize, so it'll be half in the capital budget and half in the operating budget of that $98,000.
Okay, great.
Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor McDonald, thank you.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater to endorse the recommendation of staff and enter into a renewed agreement with Efficiency One to provide the cost-sharing services of a qualified onsite energy manager for the purpose of finalizing and implementing the town's renewed energy management plan and supporting the implementation of the Community Energy Investment Plan, CEIP, and Energize Bridgewater program for a period of 24 months with the option to exit after March 31st, 2021, funded out of existing energy management program and Energize Bridgewater budgets.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Bajir. Further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item, 10.7, is permanent financing. I don't know, yeah?
Musical podium. So the document that you have is really just a follow-up. So back in January, council would have approved the temporary borrowing resolution for all the capital projects that were planned that needed to be financed. So what happens is when we get to this time of year, and MFC issues debentures two times a year in the fall and the spring, so we're at the fall debenture time where, when projects are complete, we go and actually bring this to council for their approval to finance the ones. So you had approved temporary borrowing of just over $2.2 million. $1.2 million of those projects are 100% complete, so those are the ones that we are requesting borrowing for. That would be the anaerobic digester, town hall elevator, North Parkade, and Dominion Street upgrade. So that equals just over $1.2 million. The resolution is for a maximum average interest rate of 5.5% and a term of five years. So we don't know the actual interest rate until the debenture issue is processed, but MFC are suggesting approving at 5.5%, knowing that it should come in under that. If for some reason between now and that time, something goes astray and it comes in over 5.5%, we will come back to council with that renewed information for council approval at that time. So we're asking for approval based on these terms, or better, essentially.
I like that, or better. Is someone prepared to make a motion? I know, I asked if anyone wanted to do it, but as soon as you see whereas, I know who I'm looking at.
Before I make the motion, I knew that 5.5%, I read that somewhere, so this is where I read it.
Thanks, Kim.
I would move that whereas Section 91 of the Municipal Government Act provides that a municipality is authorized to borrow money, subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs, here and after the minister, and whereas the resolution of council to borrow for various purposes was approved by the minister on April the 14th, 2020, and whereas Clause 91.1b of the Municipal Government Act authorizes council to determine the amount and term of and the rate of interest on each debenture, when the interest on the debenture is to be paid and where the principal and interest on a debenture are to be paid, and whereas Clause 91.2 of the Municipal Government Act states that in accordance with the Municipal Finance Corporation Act, the mayor, or warden, and clerk, or the person designated by the council by policy, shall sell and deliver the debentures on behalf of the municipality at a place and sum to the manner that's deemed proper. Be it therefore resolved that under the authority of Section 91 of the Municipal Government Act, that the town of Bridgewater borrow by the issue and sale of debentures, a sum or sums not exceeding $1,284,968.57, for a period not to exceed 10 years, subject to approval of the minister, and that the sum be borrowed by the issue and sale of debentures of the town of Bridgewater in the amount that the mayor, or warden, and clerk, or person designated by council deems proper, provided the average interest rate of the debentures does not exceed the rate of 5.5%. That the debentures be arranged with the Nova Scotia Municipal Finance Corporation, with interest to be paid semi-annually and a principal payment made annually. That this resolution remains in force for a period not exceeding 12 months from passing of this resolution.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any discussion?
Yes. Kim, have we seen any debentures issued lately and what their rate have been over the last couple of months?
Because the last one would have been in the spring.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, just spring and fall, so there's really no more information until we get into the actual issue.
Any further questions?
Question.
Just being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Instead of getting to sit down and then come back up, let's flip the next two items and go to budget impacts COVID-19. I'm assuming that's Director Finance again?
Yes. So basically what happened, and just to shorten the discussion in the long document that you have in front of you, council approved a regular operating budget in April. In May, the finance brought to you and Tammy some potential budget adjustments that we thought would happen, maybe, because we didn't know the true impacts of COVID, but we tried to anticipate what they were so that we could move and, you know, make some adjustments where necessary. So the spreadsheet that we gave you basically provides you with what was approved by council in May. There were a few things that were still kind of unknown, so based on the budget that was provided, there were some decisions that were deferred on things such as recreation and so on. So those things, even though they were provided in the report, weren't actually approved by council. And then in June, council made the decision not to open the pool, so you have another column for that June adjustment, which brings us to everything that was approved by council. But there are a few more adjustments that we felt needed to be made. We didn't want to go back and revisit the whole entire budget all over again. We just wanted to look at the assumptions that were brought to you in May and determine if, A, there was more information, or where we didn't quite know, we wanted to resolve those items. So we're just bringing that back to you now. The main things in revenue would be the de-transfer tax. So obviously, as we discussed earlier in the first quarter report, the de-transfer tax has come in above budget. We had, had, you know, back in May, suggested that it could be half, and had suggested that be decreased from 450 to 225. What we're saying now is, we should probably put that back to the 450. You know, if it continues at the same amount it's been, or even a little bit less than where we are right now, we should still come in on budget. So we don't think that needs to be cut any longer. The recreation, obviously, we can see where that's going to be for fall and winter. It's minimal. We do have recreation facilities and things like that that are being active again, but the town programs aren't seeing that, you know, hike in revenue. So I think we can, you know, at this point, again, we're trying to work with what we assumed in May, but just kind of finalize on some of those thoughts, is that we should reduce that revenue by $23,400 with corresponding reduction in expenses. And as well, the interest income that we talked about a little bit earlier, because receivables are a little high, we're actually earning more interest on the taxes receivable balance, even though we had suggested in May we might want to decrease that. But our cash balances have been okay, so we're still earning interest on our bank balances. So we didn't want to bring that all back, because we do have a little bit less income, but we didn't think it needed to be cut by $60,000. So we're suggesting that we bring $28,600 back into the revenue budget. So based on that new revenue, we then needed to make sure, because council's required to have a balanced budget. So we need to then reexamine the expenses that were reduced to make sure that we were still aiming for a balanced budget based on these revisions. So there were a few things that we then needed to adjust. One is the, I think council in May had approved for some of the LCLC capital budget to be paid from operating reserve, but we didn't feel that was necessary, because we've got the de-transfer tax seems to be recovering. We no longer need to pull that money from reserve unless we really have to, but it should be covered in the operating budget. We have a reduction in, like I said, in recreation. Christmas on the Hive, the events are being modified, so there's still some savings there. So that was reduced by $16,800, because the decision hadn't been made in May about that. So we wanted to make sure that gets approved now. And a delay in seasonal work, there was actually a little less savings, because they came back a few weeks earlier than anticipated. And so overall, that left us still with a little bit of money, so we're, a couple of other things that we thought should be then adjusted. So we have some occupational health and safety costs, because we had to modify workspaces, we had to buy hand sanitizers, masks, and so on. So we think that should be added to the budget of $10,000. COVID wages of $34,800, as I mentioned during the previous quarterly report, we do have some extra costs for cleaning and things like that that are above and beyond the original budget. And it leaves us with $79,900 left over, and we're recommending that be transferred to operating reserve, because we know that we have staff who are deferring training. So we know we're going to have extra costs next year, because people that need certifications and things that would have happened this year, and, you know, partly we're not sending them on training, and part of it, the training's not available. So we know people will have catch-up on things like that. And, you know, the potential for a second wave, we could have additional costs, so we have that money set aside. So we're recommending the $79,900 be set aside in operating reserve.
Yeah, the only thing that I would just note to that is, based on the discussion on the energy management plan, so there was a reduction of $8,600. Having approved that continuation of that contract, that would mean that we would be looking at transfer to reserve of $79,900, less the $8,600.
And that number may change, like, as we go, again, we were trying to take what we assumed in May and now translate it a little bit without reexamining every account again. So the de-transfer tax really had a shift in this, what was proposed in May, so we may need that, or there may be other things that come up that we can take from the $79,000, such as for the Efficiency One contract. So we do have a little bit of buffer, you know, when we have those things come up.
Questions from council? It's pretty straightforward. Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor?
Member of the council for the Town of Bridgewater accepts the budget revisions and service level reductions outlined in Document 20-040D.
Seconded by Councilor Thorburn.
I assume we don't have to highlight the $8,600?
We can say, with the adjustment noted for energy management.
Okay. Any further discussion? Question? Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We're going back up to vehicle lease extension for...
Shinema Cass.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public are probably wondering what this is. So there was a fire station fire in Cumberland County, and so they were, they needed a vehicle. And so we had a surplus vehicle, I would call it. And so our amazing volunteer fire department team reached out to their, no doubt, amazing volunteer fire department team, and said, we have a truck, let's put all the things we need to do in order, in order to make it insurable and efficient and effective. And our CIO worked with the fire department to that, but they need it for a little bit longer.
They do. There is a question, if anyone's watched the news, there's a, given the nature of the vehicle, as a pump attractor, there is a question about colder weather and storage. So they'll have to work that out. I did confirm with our fire department that this vehicle is not required for reserve or backup. And one positive thing that came out of that for us, in addition to being able to help out another fire department, is that we've got confirmation that the vehicle is surplus to our needs. So we don't need it for maintaining our rating, which is good, too. So if council's agreeable, we'd extend the lease for another six months, and then at the end of that term, consider a motion to deem it surplus.
Any questions? Council Graves?
That would be conditional on having inside storage.
So, yes, so the lease agreement does have that any damage to the vehicle is at their expense, so it'd be in their interest to make sure that it was properly stored, otherwise they would have a large bill to pay if there was any damage to the vehicle. And my, I haven't talked directly with the fire service coordinator, so I think there's probably a little bit of a, perhaps differing views on whether or not they have adequate storage. So I'll certainly make that clear, that, you know, we'd be anticipating that it would be stored properly, so there wouldn't be damage, or they would have to repair the truck before returning it.
Is water stored on those vehicles?
Yes.
So...
800 gallons.
So freezing temperatures would be a problem.
Good. Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, that's great news, because I've been having discussions for the last two or three years, reserve versus surplus. And by that deemed to be surplus, it's going to save us a million dollars in our budget, not this year, but next year, when it was supposed to be replaced. But the other part of the good news is, I think I was talking to the chief, that Unit Six is being deemed surplus this year, the old police vehicle?
I'm not too sure.
Yeah, well, you can check with Michael, but...
The old excursion?
New Number Seven was made to replace that, because that was supposed to be replaced two years ago. They're just using it to the end of this year. I'll see, I think you'll see that going. So it's a win-win.
Other questions? Council McDonald?
Is there any requirement to physically check the condition of the vehicle between the old lease and the extension, for our insurance or for any coverage?
We have a, so when we first did the lease, there was a condition assessment. So they did a walk-around and looked at it, and kind of recorded the condition of the vehicle, and the same thing would happen when we got it back. So we also inventory the items and stuff like that, so.
Someone prepared to make a motion? I think Council Bajir was hers.
Yes, Your Worship, that council for the Town of Bridgewater agreed to the extension of the vehicle lease between the Town of Bridgewater and the municipality of Cumberland for an additional six months, with the terms to be as noted in the vehicle lease dated May 29, 2020, as contained in Document 20-092A.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Thorburn. Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We're down to our last item, cost-sharing agreement, Exit 12A interchange project.
So just a quick summary?
Quick summary, please.
So council has committed to the interchange project. It's a $51 million project. It's funded through the National Trade Quarter Fund, so it's a federal and provincial project. And the town's commitment or contribution to the project is $8.4 million. So we've been working towards a cost-share agreement between the town and the province, is where our contribution would go, in terms of how that would be paid, defining the scope of the work and all of that. So the cost-sharing agreement would be committing $8.4 million to be provided to the province over a four-year term. And we would need authorization for the mayor and myself to execute that cost-sharing agreement on behalf of council.
Any questions? Quite straightforward. Someone prepared to make a motion? Well, I think Council McDonald was...
Perfect.
I move that council for the Town of Bridgewater authorize the mayor and CIO to execute a cost-sharing agreement with the province of Nova Scotia, which commits the town's contribution of $8.4 million to the Exit 12A interchange and Business Park Reconfiguration project over four fiscal years, with the terms of the agreement to be as generally discussed in camera, and with any nonsubstantial changes, subject to legal counsel's final review.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any questions? And then, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. That brings us to the end of our last meeting. So I'll save my long spiel for the next meeting, because we're going to kind of have a wrap-up. But I do want to thank each and every one of you for four incredible years. Council Graves, this is really your last official meeting. There's no coming back for you. Unless into the gallery. Yes, you can sit in the gallery in the room. World's most uncomfortable chairs. But, I mean, you've had two very productive terms on... But, I mean, you've had two very productive terms on council, and so, thank you so much for your contribution. I want to wish the others the best of luck in the upcoming election, and all the candidates in the upcoming election, and remind people to vote. I almost said vote often, vote once, but make sure you vote, please. It takes less than two minutes to vote. It is one of the easiest things you'll do, but one of the most important things you'll do. So with that, oh, Counsel Thorburn? Stealing my last word?
You didn't ask for announcements tonight, and I actually had one.
Oh, my goodness, we've got six months with no announcements, and now we have one.
But this is an important one, and depending on what happens on the election, I thought it'd be pertinent to get what's going to happen to the branch on November 11th.
Oh, yes, please share that.
So the Remembrance Day ceremony is still going to take place at the cenotaph, as usual. This year, there will be no color party. Legion members, military, police, RCMP, firefighters, and government officials will attend the ceremony at the cenotaph. The public will be discouraged from attending to conform with the public gatherings rules as per the Department of Public Health guidelines. And I would ask all residents in the town of Bridgewater to listen to CKBW, it will be on there, that at 11 o'clock, no matter where you are or what you're doing, you would stand for two minutes silence to honor the veterans that served and 1,100-plus members that we have serving today. And this can be ordered as normal. You can pick them up at the legion, call 543-3203, but they must be laid prior to the ceremony or after. There'd be no release laid during the ceremony. It's going to be a short service. The legion, there's no banquet, there's no dance, no awards. Actually, the legion will be closed that day. But the service will go on. November 11th is very important to everybody, and hopefully, everybody will do their part. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I've just been notified that 1,324 people have voted so far. So it's getting there. It's great. All right. Motion to adjourn. So moved. I'm going to give that one to Counsel Graves. I think this will be the last one, you can do that second. Counsel Thorburn, we are adjourned. Thank you.